Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock on Monday, August 25th with real call.
Howser?
Here.
Kent?
Here.
Mead?
Here.
Menke?
Here.
Ben Riceweig?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Do you have form?
Thank you.
I would move to approve the agenda.
May for second. Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Josh, you're up.
I wonder why I have this thing here? The district mission to teach all and reach all. The district vision is Urbendale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And the UCSD school board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocol.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start out with board recognition tonight.
We have a lot of students to recognize tonight, which is amazing. And we're gonna start with new recognition. This is something that was just brought to Iowa this year called the National Math Stars Program. And the state has identified the students that were in third grade last year who scored in the top 2% of every third grader in the state. That is amazing. And we have 11 students that we want to recognize. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call you up and I'm gonna give you your certificate and have you stand under the U. And we'll do a big group photo afterward. But you guys should be very proud of yourself. This is a difficult test. I said last year we had the best scores. I think you guys proved it and you did obviously the best that you can. So now I challenge you to do that again this year. Maybe there'll be another one. I don't know because that's not something that we knew about. So it was a nice surprise. So if I could, let's see if I can. Maybe you guys can move like over here because then I'm gonna put the kids right under there for just a second. And when I call you up, I want you to tell us your school. And I want to put a lot of identifying information on the kids in there. So let's start with Andrew Bartlett. Hi, everybody. And what school do you go to, Andrew?
Karen Acres.
Karen Acres, why don't you stand right, let me be you, okay? Verona Buttercase? Did I say it right?
Yes.
And what school do you go to?
Valerius.
Valerius, so you can stand right over there. August Frost. There's August. Now where do you go to school?
Homestead.
And these are this year's fourth graders, so they grow a lot. Jordan Russo. Jordan? Now where do you go to school, Jordan?
I forgot.
You forgot?
Webster.
Webster, okay. Stand right over there with them. How about Hudson South? Hudson here. And where do you go?
Valerius.
Another Valerius. You can stand right there as well. Dawson Starr. It's Dawson. Is that Dawson? No? Okay, Gavin Thorson. I used to teach math, so this makes my heart happy. And where do you go to school?
Webster.
Webster. How about Patrick Tierney? And where do you go to school, Patrick?
Karen Acres.
Karen Acres, okay. Archer Weiss. Where do you go to school, Archer?
Webster Elementary.
Webster. I'm gonna do my best. Rowan Wertheim? Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Good. And where do you go to school?
Valerius.
Valerius. And Nadia Zink. Did Dawson come? No? And where do you go to school?
Uh, Karen Acres.
Karen Acres. Why don't you let Ms. Dina put you guys in a line so she could get a photo? Let's give you guys a round of applause.
Are the principals here? The principal's down too? I know I saw Dana, didn't I? Okay, I think we are all in there. All right, ready? Here we go. One, two, three, smile. Well, great picture. Congratulations. Feel free to stay for the meeting if you want. You're all welcome unless it's past your bedtime. So the next recognition that I would like to give is for Ethan Corrigan.
Thank you. This brain can barely fit in my head.
And I'll just read so that I don't miss and state it, but as a fifth grader at Webster Elementary, Ethan won the missing child poster contest for the entire state of Iowa. He was honored by the Department of Public Safety with an all-school assembly and a pizza party. And Ethan's poster was selected for its powerful imagery and message, which perfectly embodied this year's theme, bringing our missing children home. And then Ethan went on to place third overall in the national level. And over 1,000 posters were submitted from 21 states. And I had the poster put up here so everybody could see it. I think it's beautiful and it was very well done. And we want to make sure that you are congratulated. Your art teacher in the middle school is gonna be very excited. Here we go. One, two, three. And then I think we're gonna turn it over to Jared. More. Your folder is there.
Is that you announcing all this? You're not gonna come back up?
Oh, you want me to? Sorry. And I think we're all gonna file in from the room in there.
Say, well, we'll get Tatum done first. We should do that way for all the soccer announcements. All right. Okay, so Tatum Johnson, class 5A, first-team All-State for softball. This will be the presentation here in a little bit, but she also set the career homerun record for softball at UHS and still continues to climb.
Dina, do you want coach in there too?
Oh, yeah.
Ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Congratulations.
All right. So before we present all of the certificates to the state championship-winning team, we've got a handful of individual recognitions that we're gonna do. So we'll start with boys soccer all-tournament team, Chris Boyna. Not here. And then Bryce Lumley also made the all-tournament team.
Stand over there and we'll do a separate photo of that one.
Yeah.
And then we've got Aiden Trojan also on the all-tournament team. And then Jeff Aziza, not here tonight. He's probably up at the high school playing soccer. Actually, he's up there by the night. He was the captain of the all-tournament team. And then Des Moines Register Elite All-State Boys Soccer Team Award went to Kanon Hjicarvic.
And we'll do two individual ones after we do the full soccer, so you guys stick around.
So I'm just gonna read off the names of the players that were on the state tournament-winning team, championship team. Amici Abega. Not here. Rock?
Here.
Brendan. There we go. Brendan, are you here? Chris Boyna, not here. Blake Bollerman. Abe Kung. Jimmy Deng. Fabrizio DeCausmaralas. Not here. Sebastian DeCausmaralas. Abraham Dinges. Aiden Donovan. Mason Epperson. Blaine Fornash. Zach Glenn. Kanon's not here. Will Johnson. Ken Capit. Congrats, Caden Kirk. Josh Cobens. Bryce Lumley. Emmanuel Morris. Messi Naderutse. Jeff Aziza. Isvaldo Maran Patricio. Liam Reed. Aiden Trojan. And then our coaches, Calvin Jones, Jeff Menendez, Isaac Olson. And John Mullins, head coach.
Okay, so let's make, if the players can make two lines and then coaches on the end. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. You can step out.
Maybe?
If you want to have two. So you want the two?
Yeah.
The individual.
We'll do both of you guys with one picture, but both of you with it, yeah. Yeah. Back in and just one more picture. Yes, with you as well. Yes. Okay. Okay, ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Great. Congratulations. So you're driving, Jared. Just go ahead and hit the down button there when you're ready.
Yep. Teams' update. All right, so a quick review of summer athletics. Softball, 10-28 overall record, 419 in the CIML. As we just got done discussing, Tatum Johnson, first-team All-State, class 5A. Also broke the homerun record this year. She broke it with her 24th homerun, which was pretty early on in the season, and then added seven more to the total as the year went on. So pretty outstanding season for her. Baseball, 13-23 overall record, 419 in the CIML. And then kind of looking to the future, got a big senior class coming back next year with a group of guys that have played together for quite a while and had some success at the lower levels. So should be an exciting season for them next summer. Participation numbers. You guys take a look at those. I can read them all off to you, but unless you want me to. You have any questions about any that are standing out to you, feel free to.
Do you see any trends year over year?
I haven't really looked at the historical data because I've been kind of considering this a baseline for us since we're all new staff right now. So for me, this data is like, here's where we're starting. Let's see where we are in a couple of years. If you want to see some historical data, I can get that to you. Especially like post-COVID, would probably be curious to look at, but.
I'd be curious about girls tennis too, since it switched to the fall rather than the spring. If that impacted participation. I know they started in the summer, which is nice to not overlap too much with volleyball, but I know a lot of those girls overlap.
Yeah, so yeah, I know they've got some overlap with volleyball, cross-country, marching band. Kind of the big three there, but lots of sharing going on right now. All right, so speaking of girls tennis, I'd already sent my slides to Julie at this point, but we found out today that they're ranked number 10 in the state of Iowa, so that's pretty cool. Their only two losses so far were to number one and the number four teams. We've got a tough conference, play in the toughest conference in the state. And it's, they're having a really good season, off to a 7-2 start so far. As Jenny mentioned, this is a move to the fall season for the first time, so it probably feels like we just got done with tennis, and we actually did. So they wrapped up in the middle of June and like here we are in August, they're going strong again. So having a real good year so far. Boys golf, they're playing in their third varsity meet today. Placed fifth at Ankeny and they're posting some strong individual scores. Also, after I sent the slides to Julie, we found out they're ranked number 25 in class 4A. So starting to get some recognition statewide. They've got a lot of kids out. Coaches have been talking to me about getting another coach on, so we're kind of waiting for somebody to finish their coaching authorization so that we can get some additional coaching at practices. It's hard for them to manage all of that when you're on the driving range and you're out on the course. Trying to work with individuals or groups of kids is really challenging with just two coaches when you've got such big numbers. So they want to try to increase the amount of time that the kids are getting on the course because the alternative is that they have to kind of practice in shifts and they just don't get as much time hitting balls as they should. For the remainder of the sports, so those first two, golf and tennis, those are already started up. The rest of them are just getting started and haven't had any competitions yet. So volleyball, they've got Bondurant Tournament this Saturday. Middle school's starting practice this week. Coaching, we're still short a couple of coaches with volleyball. But Coach Hobert at the high school, she's been actively working with me to try to recruit some people. And we got another one on board today and then another application came through right before the meeting. So hopefully we'll get coaching staff rounded out. Football, first varsity game is August 29th, this Friday at Frerich Field. Middle school starts practice this week. One notable thing about the middle school, we found out a few weeks ago that the goalposts at the middle school were thrown away after the season last year. I put it to work where like, hey, can you get the field set up? They're like, actually, we threw those away because they were pretty junky. I was like, oh, that's neat. So instead, we made some chicken salad and we're gonna have all of the middle school games up at Frerich Field this year. So we were able to work with the other schools to get the schedule switched up. It's gonna put some start times a little earlier or later than what they normally would. Most of our games that we're gonna be at home, we're gonna move from Tuesday to Thursday to help accommodate the high school schedule a little bit better. But in my opinion, this is gonna be pretty big for the middle school kids because I know when we're getting feedback about the CIML and that whole discussion, that was a big piece of it, was like we need to improve the facilities at the middle school. Well, this isn't improving the facilities directly, but at least it's letting the kids play in a spot that is gonna feel like a big improvement to them. Cross-country, their first meet's tomorrow at Mount Vernon. The boys' first meet's this Saturday at Johnston. And middle school's starting practice this week. Cheer is going strong. They had their tryouts back in the spring. So they're kind of broken up into two groups right now, sideline and competition. They'll beat the football game this Friday, obviously. They've got 36 fall participants, so they've got a pretty big squad. Jaywalkers had their tryouts in the spring as well. They're getting busy getting ready for competitions and football performances. And then our second home game, they're doing the Jaywalker Clinic and performance with the elementary students, which is always pretty popular. Girls swimming, continuing their co-op with Johnston. Right now, we've got four participants out. And their first meet is September 9th. Performing arts, show choir, they wrapped up camp recently with choreographer. Middle school and high school are both still working, working hard and having practices, getting ready for their season, which really doesn't begin until like winter time. But it takes a lot of time and energy and effort to get used to doing their new routine. Again, I mentioned this at the last update, we've got new directors at the high school and so they're getting acclimated to their new roles and the kids seem to be enjoying themselves so far. Marching band wrapped up camp, working on their halftime show. And then the Urbendale Marching Invitational coming up on the 27th. They're doing it a little bit differently this year with that. It's usually an afternoon and evening event. This year, it's gonna be a morning and afternoon event. It sounds like what happened last year was there was another school that had their competition on the same day and it took away some of the bands that would normally come to ours. So instead of fighting against each other, I think they worked together to create one big competition so that some of the bands that are performing at ours can go to this other school. Pella's the other school. They're, they can go to Pella and perform at theirs as well. And then there'll be one overall winner for the schools that are participating in both, so that's kind of a cool thing. And then drama, preparing for the fall play, Servant of Two Masters, which is gonna debut on November 8th. They're getting ready for preparations on that. And then some other notable news, concession stand renovation's coming along really well. I was just sitting there today and Mike sent some pictures. Things are looking good. Should be ready to roll this Friday. The electrician was in there working today and he was pretty confident he'd be done before Friday. So we'll look forward to having a new concession stand at that game. And then middle school, I mentioned the football games coming to Frerich Field. Activities passes and bound update. So we're selling the passes through bound. Those should be rolling out to people here in the next day or so. Our first home event's not till Friday, so we've got a couple of days to play with here. But there's just lots of moving parts with trying to get everybody their passes on time. Let's see. And then the activities and community institutions that just got posted today from the last board meeting that we talked about trying to recruit more workers for some of our events. So that got posted and we'll be hopefully receiving some applications soon for that.
What's the likelihood that there's another middle school game played at the middle school for football?
Hopefully zero.
I think you're not gonna be able to get that team back to the middle school ever. I think it's a great thing, by the way, don't get me wrong. You have now, yeah, you've changed the course of middle school football.
So do we save money then by not doing the football? Just kidding.
I mean, actually, yes. I don't know how much money we're saving, but we don't have the cost associated with paying ground crew to get the field prepped and move all the stuff. We don't have the cost of buying new goalposts, obviously. And actually, we're gonna make money because we'll be able to set up a concession stand. We'll have a better control of the gate because it sounds like at the middle school, it was kind of...
Lucy goosey.
Lucy goosey with how people would get in because like you can go park on Townsend and walk up and yes, there's stakes with flags there, but like there's people coming in for free. So it'll be a little harder to do that at the football field. So we should come out ahead on this, hopefully.
How does it impact the practice for the high schoolers?
So they're gonna have to move some parts of their practices on Thursdays indoors. So fortunately, the volleyball schedule worked out in a way that a gym should be open. So the plan is they'll come out, do their stretches and get going on the football field right away. And then they'll start going through their practice. And then once it hits a certain point where we need the middle school to be able to warm up, they'll move inside and go in the gym. There's also maybe some opportunities to go over and use the middle school field because I think there's like two nights that are really the ones that are impacted on that, so.
I was just gonna say, having a middle school football player, when we traveled to away games that were held in high school stadiums, the kids loved it. It's just a great atmosphere, so that's.
Yeah, I told Coach Dillon, same thing that you were asking Jason, was that like now that we're doing this, like let's just plan for next year and then that way when we're creating the schedule with the other schools, like we'll just let them know like here's our situation. We're gonna play at the high school, but it's gonna alter the start times a little bit, probably. So there is, most of the schools opted, because we gave them two options. One was to play, since the games are on Tuesday, play on Thursday, but either at a 4:00 or 4:30 start time depending on what was going on. Because Thursday is usually a pretty light practice for the football teams. They're kind of doing their install of the first 15 plays and those sorts of things where Tuesday's a little tougher because that's the, that's the practice that's like the most important. So there was one school that opted to stay on Tuesday but go to a 6:30 start time, which would allow our team to practice until 6 o'clock and then we'd still have 30 minutes warm up. We've got lights. So they were one of the closer schools, so they decided the later game wasn't gonna be that bad.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A lot of hard work.
Yep. Thank you.
Don't forget your folder.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, so on your table, when you came in, you had a little black bag with a Urbendale U on it. We wanted to make sure that, thank you for showing that. That is a, every year, we try to do something for staff so that it's not much, but it's a welcome back. We appreciate you. And this year, this is what we came up with. So you have an insulated lunchbox with some snacks in it. And I think they were pretty well received today. We got a lot of really good feedback on those. So we're already talking about what we're gonna do next year, so might shake it up a little bit. I do want to publicly thank all of our PTOs and our volunteers who helped our principals and staff get ready for the first day. They were out putting signs up in the yard. They were helping in the office. They were just all over the place and we can't do everything we do without the support of our parents and communities. So we really appreciate that. Our first day report, all of my team was in a different school today, supporting. And so far, everything seemed to have gone pretty well. It was smooth. The principals and their staff were well-prepared and they received the kids. Kids were so happy to get back in school, at least everybody over five. There were a few five-year-olds that were not quite ready to head into the building. And it was a tough one, but I remember as a mom, it's, you get through it. So that was great. Our staff was really, really well-prepared to help get them in the right place. The one thing I will ask, I know parents at the middle school and high school, Aurora Avenue can be a challenge, so I would ask them to follow whatever the path is that's been laid out for you. And please don't park on Aurora at pickup. I know it was a little hectic today. I'm hoping it was mostly because it's the first day. First week will likely be a challenge, but if we could all be very cognizant of what that pickup criteria looks like, that should help us. Our activities and sports are up to running, up and running, as Jared said. If you go to our new website, not our site, but the state site called Bound for game and event times. You go to, the website is gobound.com and you can find Urbendale in there. It's a, you can add a bookmark, so that once you've clicked on the school, you can bookmark it, so you can come back to it. It's a much more, my opinion, friendly format where you can see that it's tennis, cause it has a tennis ball and volleyball has a volleyball. And it's kind of color-coded and very easy to determine what's going on. So that's the new site that the C I M L, coming from the state, has asked us to use. So I think it's pretty user-friendly. If you have any trouble, you can let us know and we'll help you navigate it. Very happy to see the recognitions tonight and I'm happy that Jared is adding the coaches to come to these recognitions. So you can hear from the coaches as well, so we'll be working the kinks out of that. And then on finally, the eighth of September, we will welcome our student board representatives for the first meeting. So we'll fill that table up over there and looking forward to seeing them. We are gonna do a new picture, but we're gonna wait until November to do that picture. So Tim and I, Mr. Carver and I, meet next Friday with the kids to kind of go over what it's like to be a board member and kind of the processes, so we can orient them and answer any other questions. But I think that's all that I have.
We have one of our students that is part of our showcase coming to live in practice.
It's okay. We're gonna forward, so close your eyes.
Okay, there are no public comments today.
So I would move to bring the consent agenda forward.
And then I wanna request that we pull out the minutes from July fourteenth for a meeting. I need a correction for two of my abstentions on that, so if we can vote on that separately. Do we wanna do that first or the other items first?
No, we'll do the consent agenda minus the minutes from July fourteenth. And then we'll come back to the minutes.
And we'll second the motion for the consent agenda minus the board minutes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna need to run a call.
No conversation, comments?
Sorry, did anybody have any conversation, questions?
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Ben Riceway?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
And then I would, just for everybody's information, just making sure that abstentions get corrected for me on. Let's see, we should have had it ready, item eight. F and G for the lease agreements with the city and the S R O twenty-eight E. So just correcting that. So with those changes, I would move to approve the approval of the July fourteenth minutes.
I'd second it.
Hauser second.
Any questions about that?
Okay, so we'll do another. Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Ben Riceway?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Onto the action items. And the first one is the second reading of policy five nineteen.
Before we start those, can I just make a statement so that people aren't confused? There was a policy five forty-five drafted to be at a second reading tonight that was dropped from the agenda. And the reason that that was dropped, just for transparency, I, as I told you, there are a number of policies that need work. And as I send them to the attorney, when we noticed that some of them are connected, I sent five forty-five, which is connected to some other ones that we are looking at doing updates for. They asked that we hold on to that until we can do some of these other updates. But also, there's more information coming on changes in chapter one oh-two from the state. And it doesn't make sense to change something that you're gonna turn around and have to change anyway. So that's, that's why that policy is not on here. The other three policies that are on here, there were, there were a couple of pieces of feedback that we can talk about when we get to B and C. But the one on number, on letter A was not one of the ones.
So we'll start with five nineteen. Anybody have any questions, comments? Hearing none, I guess I'll call for a motion.
I'd move to approve the second reading for policy five nineteen.
Maple second.
So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Next is policy six oh-two.
I've not received any additional feedback since sharing with you at the last meeting.
Any conversation, questions, concerns?
I would move to approve the policy with some notations, to leave in gender identity, but to accept the change on the compliance coordinator and the update to the legal references.
Manke will second.
Thank you.
So everybody understands the amendment?
Gender identity stays. The title change. Is, the title has changed.
Yeah.
Yep.
So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six one. And up next is policy six twenty-five.
This is one, I believe Director, Director Manke asked about L, M, N, and O in the beginning under the enrollment, compulsory enrollment, and they are duplicative. So should the board wanna pass this, I would have the motion include everything except that.
Sorry, can you state that again?
Yep, at the top, under compulsory enrollment, if you look down, it goes A through O.
Yeah.
And Jason had pointed out that L, M, N, and O were duplicate, because they're, they're, they should be in the attendance piece, not in the enrollment.
They're under the truancy part, not the.
So we're saying, what you're saying is we're moving it out of there?
Yep.
Out of L, M, N, O?
We would take those out of that portion, leave them in the bottom portion under the absenteeism.
I would move to approve policy six twenty-five with the striking of items L, M, N, and O under the compulsory enrollment section.
Ben Rice, we'll second.
Who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
I'd move to approve the bid for the high school choir risers, what we discussed at the last meeting.
Manke will second.
Any questions, concerns? One call.
So we're gonna start with Mead?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes, with jazz hands.
Ben Riceway?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
I think we'll take a five minute.
I just, I just got a text from my mom that she's, she's almost here.
We'll take a five minute break.
Okay. Tell her, don't rush.
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, no accidents in there, yeah.
I think I did.
So recess at six thirty-nine. No, we make it awkward downstairs. Act at six forty-one?
There you go, okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and resume. And up next is high school showcase.
Well, we are back again at the start of the school year to showcase one of our awesome programs. This time, we are in the area of a new C N A program that we got started last year. Mrs. Wager and I and our former work-based learning facilitator now, Career Connected Learning.
Career Connected Learning Facilitator, yes.
And so we're rolling with the times and as our state adjusts to, to what's happening with Career Connected Learning. But I'll go ahead and advance the slide. And unfortunately, one of our students was unable to be here, had a death of family, and so wasn't able to be here today. So essentially, the idea that came up was that how do we get our kids into more opportunities around the area of work-based learning opportunities that happen oftentimes during the school year in a very spread-out manner? Like students needing to go out to D Mac at Ankeny on a, you know, everyday basis for just an hour, hour or two, or something like that. And the idea came up, Dar, as Darlene and I were kind of kicking around this idea that how might we open up some opportunities for students that may be the transportation issue that we always, that, that roadblock that we always faced during the school year? How might we do something different? I was at a meeting with some people from D Mac and they said, hey, there's this, this potential opportunity that we could do a class out west. And at, at the West Campus. So this is a picture of one of the students that couldn't be here tonight, but she's, Zakiya is up there in the top left-hand corner with me out in front of the D Mac West Campus. We had ten students, is that right?
Nine finished, yeah.
There were about nine that finished the program. And they did, you can see the dates there. They went between June second and June thirteenth and at, at D Mac West. And then they did the program, or clinicals out in Altoona. It turned, it turns out that the instructor is a teacher at Southeast Polk, so she already had a relationship with a, a care facility, a skilled care facility in Altoona. So the great thing is, these, our students were able to get in a condensed amount of time. The C N A class, the training, they have the whole setup out there. It's a picture of our kids there at, at the simulated work site. And Maggie will be able to talk more about what that was like in a little bit, but it was super exciting. One of the other advantages was, we had one student that had limited transportation availability and we were able to make that work. You know, you can do that in a couple of weeks versus a whole semester. So at least that's where we're at right now. And we were all able to do this without any fund, or the students didn't have to pay for any of the program either, which was great.
All right, so just a kind of background about how this all came about. So last October, gosh, that's, that's almost a year ago. We've kind of batted the idea around a lot, but Mr. Carver met with Randy Gabriel from D Mac and talked about us having a C N A class that would be just for U H S students. And D Mac received a grant in January, so we were able to offer that to our students for no charge. In February and March, I helped identify students that were interested in the medical field and had them fill out an application. And then in April and May, the students were selected and they had an orientation at the high school prior to the start of the class. So kind of got a couple of quotes here. I won't read obviously the both of the quotes. But we had nine current eleventh and twelfth graders that were able to earn credit and all of them received at least an A or a B in the course. The, both were, you know, Randy Gabriel and Kristen Brookover both said that, you know, these, giving students an opportunity to get these skills prior to graduation. And being a collaboration between Urbendale and D Mac. And just a nice way to get kids experience and hopefully being able to do something like this in other areas in the future. All right, so good stuff.
So I decided to apply because I'm interested in going to nursing or like the medical field. And then I would have wanted to do it like during the school year, but I just don't have the availability to like block off half my schedule for that. So I applied for the spring semester of this year and then I was just planning on taking less classes. But then we were told that there's gonna be a summer one, and so then I was able to apply for that and do it then. Cause otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to get it done before, like college applications and stuff. I had a, the teacher was great. It was Melissa Hanson from Southeast Polk. She's like a registered nurse and then she teaches it there and they, they have a ton of students to do it. And like she, I know me and one other student, we both got our license after this and we were both very prepared. I mean, it was like a knowledge test and then a skills test and her tests were just like identical, like pretty much to that. So it was not hard at all. C N A has like become like a pretty important thing for like nursing. Again, she said that majority of the community colleges in Iowa like require you to have it before you apply. So it's kind of necessary. I know a lot of people were wanting to do this and like obviously, not everyone could, cause we only took ten. But I thought the three-week program was great, cause I mean, having a busy schedule was, it's hard to like fit a semester-long class in like that. So yeah, and I, I totally liked the teacher and she prepared us very well for the license test.
What about the, the, the experience when you went through this? What was that like?
It was definitely, it, you're very, like you go in right away and you're already starting to do, perform on the resonance. So it was, I mean, it was kind of a surprise at first, but after, I mean, you spend the whole day there. So by the end, we're, we were like answering call lights and doing it all of ourselves. So it was pretty easy to catch up. And then it helped too with the skills, because with those dummies, it's like not as realistic as a real, a real test. Yeah, and like even on the license test, like for my skills test, I had a real person. So you have to like be able to not just rely on having a dummy to do your test on.
I think one of the things that really stood, stood out to me is, is I got to, actually, Zakiya's, I got to do a little, little driving and talking with her during this. And she talked about that this is gonna open up some doors for her, specifically in her, they live a, an Afghani family. It's moved recently to Urbendale from Iowa Falls. And she talked about, you know, one of the reasons they came here was because of the community and having just people of different ages and the opportunity to, because of getting this C N A, this initial start into, like Maggie said, ultimately getting the certification, the potential employment even while they're still in, in high school. I mean, like things that are.